Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular portion of our meeting tonight. We'll have a study session starting shortly. If you would all rise as you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all members present except Director France, who's trying to get in remote, last I heard, so we'll begin without her. First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
By Charles, second by Amy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries six zero. Under new business, the first item is the pre-certified for the 2025 Pay 26 levy. Director Ryder.
Thank you, and good evening. It is that time of year for us to be looking at the levy certification. For those who may not know much about how this works or what this is about, the levy limitation and certification process allows for us to submit data during the summer months to the state Minnesota Department of Education and provide them information as to what it is that we have outstanding, whether it's debt, or whether it's leases, or if it's items that we can levy for with our taxpayers and we need to be able to give them some estimates, things like reemployment, things of that nature. All of those are done through a process that they have online, and that has been done. With that information submitted, then the state turns around a levy certification document, which is typically around thirty-nine to forty pages of all formulas. And what we focus on is the summary page, which is included in the board packet. And the one that is in the board packet has not changed since the twelfth, so the twenty-second one dated out there on the website by MDE is very similar. The option at this point in time is for the school board to take action regarding whether to approve the preliminary certified levy at maximum, which affords us the opportunity to then take advantage of any possible late-last-minute changes that they might have in formulas or adjustments that the state may have on their end. In that way, we can make sure that we're going to be able to levy come December the full amount should you choose to do so at that time. At this point, it is the recommendation that the maximum be done, as to do otherwise would limit us with only that dollar amount per line item. And at this point in time, it's just a lot of changes happening at the state. They're catching up on things, but some things are still kind of shifting a little for some districts. We have not seen a change in the last three days that they have run the reports. However, you know, things can shift a little. So that is what is before you, and the timeline for this then would be for you to see this again in December. They usually have elections in November for those that have them, and that's an opportunity for referendums or other things like that to take place that may impact the levy. We have nothing like that on the agenda at this time, but it is a process statewide, and that is when you would then certify finally the levy. This levy is for the Pay 26, which is when our taxpayers would make payment during that calendar year, and it does provide the revenue for us for our budget cycle for the 2026-2027 school year.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposed property tax level as recommended.
So may.
By Amy, second by Jessica. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, Director France has joined us. Can you hear us, Mary?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. So this does require a roll call, so we'll start with Director Olsted.
Aye.
And Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Boyden.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
And Director France.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. And then next is a RFP for Brokerage Services. Director Ryder.
Yes, thank you. As the board has approved site consolidations, we are then now needing to determine a broker to assist us with the sale and marketing of our district service center. What you have included in your packet is the request for proposal draft that we have created with timelines that are in October for us to be receiving, first publish the RFP, and then receive proposals from various different brokers, having interviews should we choose to do so, and bring this then to board for action.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the RFP as presented. By Director Atkinson, second by Director Johnson. Questions or discussion?
Only one question.
Director Olsted.
Thank you. Not that I foresee this happening, but what happens if no one submits?
We would begin the process again, first trying to figure out exactly why that may be the case by reaching out to some and finding out what it is that they were concerned about.
And if that happens, we've built in kind of a timeline. Again, don't anticipate this, but built in a timeline just in case.
Right. We want to do this as quickly as possible, but should that happen, we'd want to also do our due diligence in affording the proper time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Director Mason.
I was wondering, how is it sent out? Is it sent to a list of selected vendors or just published publicly for anyone?
Right, so we publish that in the paper as, well, online. And then in addition, we would also be sending that out by email to those that we know of. So anyone who might be listening and wants to be a part of that certainly can feel free to let us know that they want to be on that list, but we'll do our best to capture those all around.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Again, this does require roll calls, so we'll start with Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Boyden.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
And Director France.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. And finally, we have a reassignment of some staff. Director Cothran.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So this one is fairly simple. It's just looking to reassign two resource pairs to a 2.0 FT center base, so the memo is included in the packet, and it's to respond to the increased student needs. The elementary life skills program require additional center-based pair educator support. This adjustment will be cost neutral as existing open resource pair educator hours are being redirected to meet these needs, and we're seeking board approval for this reassignment to meet the growing needs of the program and ensure that the district continues to provide effective support for students.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the staff reassignment as presented.
So may.
By Director Mason, second by Director Olsted. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, again, roll call required. Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Boyden.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
And Director France.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. And that concludes our business portion of tonight's meeting, and we will now transition to study session. The first item on the agenda for that is the public forum. This is a fifteen-minute period of time set aside for the board to receive citizen input. Each speaker is asked to stay within the three-minute time limit, and we have one speaker tonight, and John Conlin.
Point of order, Chair.
I'm sorry.
We need to adjourn. We didn't officially make a motion to adjourn.
We usually do that, Martha? Okay. If you can stand right there, Mr. Conlin.
Sorry about that.
I will make sure that we adjourn the business portion of the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to, thank you, Lisa, to adjourn the business portion of the meeting.
So may.
By Director Olsted.
Second.
By Director Atkinson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, that requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
Director Olsted.
Aye.
And Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Boyden.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
And Director France.
Aye.
And that does carry seven zero. Mr. Conlin, you may now enter to the dais.
Is this where I speak?
That's it.
Awesome. All right, good evening, Chair, Superintendent Board Members, and Neighbors. My name is John Conlin. I'm a parent of three students in our district, two of which are in the middle school and one is in the elementary. I'm also a finance professional who generally looks forward to sitting down at night with my kids and working on math. Over the past few years, I've noticed that as a district, we're not giving students enough focused time on core math skills. The first two weeks of school have been great overall, but my concern for the amount of time spent on core math skills and lack of time spent building on these foundational skills has me concerned. This year in middle school, with the newer CPM curriculum, a typical homework set looks something like this. It includes six questions, four of which I would regard as true math problems, which are bookended by reflection prompts. I'd like to share with you some examples of the questions that I'm seeing in the math Question one, think about what you have learned today regarding growth and fixed mindsets. What is one thing you have learned about mindsets? How will you work on having a growth mindset this year? The other one that I'd like to reference, learning new material can be stressful and it can be exciting. What is one thing that causes you stress when learning something new? What is one thing you enjoy about learning something new? These type of questions, in my opinion, tend to alienate my students and create disdain towards the subject that they're working on. From my experience as a CFO and finance professional, to me, the real growth mindset happens when students wrestle with problems, make mistakes, try again, and in reality, that's where they build confidence. It is my understanding in speaking with fellow parents that some parents are starting to opt out of the middle school CPM math curriculum, and accelerated pathways have been removed at the middle school level. At the same time, parents in my neighborhood who have students in Algebra II recently received a note about their students performing extremely poor on the first test of the year. To me, these are flashing warning signals for our school. It suggests we're not preparing students in middle school as they move into high school and college-level math courses. And is this a product of the CPM? Is it the lack of time learning the foundational skills in elementary or middle school? I trust that we can get there as a school to figure that out. I believe we can fix this and do it in a way that supports the teachers and honors the strategic plan, its first pillar, which is academic excellence. Our teachers work extremely hard. Let's equip them with structure and curriculum that lifts all learners so more kids leave the kitchen table feeling proud of what they just conquered. Thanks for your time and service to our students.
Thank you, Mr. Conlin. All right, moving down to the purpose and agenda of the study session, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board of Directors. This evening in our study session, we will have a few proclamations that we'll review on behalf of our staff. We've got an enrollment, standing enrollment update that we try to give to you all as we start up the school year. We're going to share a preliminary view of our audit and kind of where we're seeing things trending, and then a real brief discussion about conversations around budget priorities. We will do another review of some of our student data and resources, and more specifically, like our academic approaches to how we're responding to the data, and then also have conversation around our elementary attendance boundary discussion, which is an update from one of our committees that we just had a conversation and presentation with. And then closing out this evening with a draft, goals that I've set aligned to the MSBA Superintendent Evaluation Model. And that will cover our evening.
All right, thank you. All right, first on the agenda, we have a handful of proclamations, and we will start with Human Resources Appreciation Week, and Director Boyden, if you wouldn't mind reading the proclamation.
Human Resources Appreciation Week, September twenty-second through twenty-six, 2025. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September twenty-second through twenty-six, 2025, as Human Resources Appreciation Week. Our human resources staff play an essential role in the success of our students by recruiting and retaining a high-quality staff. This week, we share our thanks and gratitude for these crucial staff, whereas National Human Resource Professional Day is celebrated on September twenty-six, 2025, whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 6.5 human resources staff, whereas human resources staff support our more than 1,300 Prior Lake Savage Area Schools staff throughout handling benefits, contracts, employee wellness, policies, professional growth, and additional services, whereas human resources staff work to support the selection and retention of a high-quality workforce so we can fulfill the mission of our district and the success of our students. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' human resources staff for their work supporting all employees and ultimately the educational needs of our students, and proclaims September twenty-second through twenty-six, 2025, to be Human Resources Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Director Cothran.
Thank you, Board Chair White, Board Directors, and Superintendent Thomas. I would like to start by extending my deepest gratitude to our human resources team for the vital role they play in supporting our schools. When I was starting my role here, I was told that they were small but mighty, and that they are. From recruiting and retaining exceptional staff to fostering a positive workplace culture to ensuring our employees feel valued and supported, our HR department is at the heart of helping our district grow and succeed. I'd like to recognize the individuals who make this small department so mighty. Assistant Director Michael Knutson, Senior Human Resources Specialist Rachel Hockford, Human Resources Specialist Morgan Ziskowski, Benefits Coordinator Terry Schoenbauer, Human Resource Assistant Julia Shereková, and Administrative Assistant Allison Burke. Thank you all for your dedication, professionalism, and commitment to serving our staff, students, and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is National Physical Therapist Month. Director Mason, would you mind reading the proclamation?
National Physical Therapist Month, October 2025. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 2025 as National Physical Therapist Month. This month, we celebrate the physical therapy profession, spotlight the many benefits of physical therapy, and how physical therapists help people make changes to improve their quality of life. Physical therapists are integral members of the school-based teams that ensure a free and appropriate education for students with disabilities and prepare them for further education, employment, and independent living. School-based physical therapists support children who have a disability or functional limitation that prevents them from engaging fully in the education system. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' physical therapists for its work supporting all students, and proclaims October 2025 to be National Physical Therapist Month, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing Physical Therapy Month. We have one awesome physical therapist, Dr. Todd Leckler, and he supports seventy kids across the district from birth to grade twelve in accessing their education. So we're so grateful for him, and he makes it fun for staff and for kids, and we're just really glad he's here with us at PLSAS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Operational Staff Appreciation Week. Director Johnson, would you mind reading that proclamation?
Oh, I can take that one, no problem.
Outstanding.
No problem. Operational Services Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September twenty-ninth through October third as Operational Services Staff Appreciation Week. PLSAS custodial inside and outside maintenance staff provide essential support to more than 8,600 Prior Lake Savage Area students, more than 1,300 employees, and to the community members who visit and use District 719 facilities. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has seventy-two Operational Services staff. Whereas, Operational Services staff are responsible for the care and maintenance of the district's 1.68 million square feet and thirteen buildings and one leased space, and for over 323 acres of land. Whereas, Operational Service staff provide exceptional custodial grounds, maintenance, repair, and delivery services for the district's buildings and grounds. Whereas, Operational Services staff take pride in providing students, staff, and community members with high-quality, efficient, sustainable, and safe physical environments that positively impact our students' learning and experience. Whereas, Operational Service staff support the district's wise stewardship core values by practicing and implementing energy-saving and sustainable initiatives. Whereas, Operational Services staff provide clean, safe, and secure facilities and grounds, operate in a resource-efficient and sustainable manner, and provide a high level of customer service and satisfaction. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' Operations Services staff for supporting the education of our students and staff, and proclaims September twenty-ninth to October third as Operational Services Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor to represent this amazing group. I'll start by reinforcing or mentioning again some of the numbers mentioned by Director Atkinson. We have seventy-two people, and they deal with 1.68 million square feet every day. They clean those spaces every day, and they do it five days a week. We have 323 acres worth of grounds that they are working on constantly keeping maintained. That is a pretty hefty lift by that group, and I'm constantly impressed by what they get done every day of the year. And I really, like I mentioned, I am exceptionally proud of the chance to lead this group, and I hope to continue our efforts on into the future as long as we possibly can. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is National Coaches Appreciation Day. Director Johnson.
Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October sixth, 2025, as National Coaches Day. We honor the men and women who inspire us to work harder to do our best. Across the country, in every community, a coach organizes teams, plans practices and trainings, motivates players to strive to be the best they can be. At the same time, coaches pinpoint areas for improvement and supply guidance. Every sport and competition requires a leader. More importantly, a leader who knows the game and how to drive athletes to work together as a team. Many coaches maintain a schedule for training, conditioning, and preparing athletes. Not only do they create these schedules for competition, but also for their best health. Injuries sideline athletes and upset team dynamics. Although a coach's final goal is winning, they do so through a wealth of knowledge. Coaches work to build teams that bond well. They develop work ethics and set standards for their athletes that many carry with them throughout their lifetime. For many athletes, coaches teach them to focus and how to reach a goal, which sometimes is not about winning. Sometimes, the achievement is an improvement, playing by the rules or learning to respect others, themselves, or the game. Coaches represent leadership, mentors, and inspiration. Often, a coach's words will echo throughout an athlete's mind for years to come. During difficult times, the words motivate them to move forward. Rarely do these coaches even know the impact they've ever had on an athlete until many decades pass. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' coaches for their work supporting all students, and proclaims October sixth, 2025, to be National Coaches Day in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Director Marshall.
Do you want to read the Arts, Athletics, and Activities?
Sure, we can do it back to back, sure. Director Olsted, would you mind reading the Arts, Athletics, and Activities Staff Appreciation Week Resolution?
Yes, happy to. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October sixth through tenth, 2025, as Arts, Athletics, and Activities Staff Appreciation Week. Arts, Athletics, and Activities staff provide extracurricular support to our more than 8,600 Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' students. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas, Arts, Athletics, and Activities staff provide support, learning, and development to students outside of the traditional classroom. Whereas, Arts, Athletics, and Activities staff instill lifelong positive traits in students such as confidence, teamwork, communication, and more that can all be translated to various aspects of students' lives. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' Arts, Athletics, and Activities staff for supporting the extracurricular activities and education of our students, and declares October sixth through tenth to be Arts, Athletics, and Activities Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
All right, well, thank you very much for taking the time and energy today to recognize all of our coaches, advisors, and staff members. I work with an outstanding group of people. The amount of time, dedication, commitment, passion, and energy that our coaches and advisors put into their co-curricular activities is truly amazing. It has been shown that a coach or advisor has as much, if not even more, of an impact on the growth and development of students than sometimes even their own parents. In education-based athletics and activities, our coaches and advisors are constantly asked to look at their purpose, their why for what they do. Winning is always one of our goals, but it's not why we coach and lead these activities. Rather, the work is about cultivating and developing outstanding human beings through an understanding of teamwork, accountability, knowing it's okay to fail, and displaying compassion, respect, and love for those around you. It's about building relationships that are authentic, honest, and lasting. Our coaches and advisors do not do this work for the pay. We all know that, as I shared with you last spring, our coaches and advisors are at the bottom of the South Suburban Conference when it comes to average stipends. But rather, they do it for the passion they have for the sport or activity, and the love that they have for those students on whom they make such a large impact and difference. We are extremely lucky and honored to be able to have such outstanding individuals leading our students in these various roles, and I want to say thank you to all of them for the difference that they have made in so many lives. Additionally, we could not run all of our events and competitions without the outstanding support and commitment that we receive from our event workers. Many individuals from throughout the district have given up countless nights and weekends to help support and manage our events. They are often the unsung heroes in making sure all of our events run smoothly, and I want to thank all of them for their continued support and dedication. This includes the amazing grounds crew and custodial staff, those that Director Powers just mentioned, for the support and the work that they provide for all of our events. It also includes our high school administrators, who understand the importance of co-curricular activities in the lives of our students and support the participation and inclusion of our students in these activities. And it also, of course, includes our very own Martha Walls, who puts in countless hours selling and scanning tickets for so many of our events. Lastly, I need to recognize and thank the amazing individuals who work in the Activities Office. Beth Fuller, Heather Pearson, and Lauren Albrecht are truly unbelievable in what they do. Their ability to multitask, create relationships with students and staff members, keep the office organized and running efficiently, and keeping me in line while continuing to teach me new things every day is remarkable. I could not ask for a better staff, and they are one of the main reasons why I get up each morning and look forward to coming into work. All four of them are more than just coworkers. We make up our own team based on our friendship and bond that we have with each other as true colleagues and friends. So thank you to the Activities Office staff for your amazing work, commitment, dedication, and love that you show to the entire PLSAS community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. And thank you, everyone. Moving on to Oversight of Operations, at this time, Director Ryder will be giving us a budget update, and these are going to be reports only. No action is requested. It will include an enrollment update, the preliminary audit review, and discussion around board budget priorities. Lisa.
Thank you, and good evening. This presentation about enrollment is a little bit of a shift from what we've been talking about in the last few weeks. We've been focusing previously on what are our kindergarten enrollments looking like at the time, and how does that compare to where we were anticipating to be, right? We are now taking this information that we have for our first MARS update for our beginning of our fall data to be reported, and we are putting it into a... Sorry, I don't know why it's doing this. I'm so sorry. No worries. So we are going to put into a model that we utilize for purposes of projecting forward our enrollment. We start with our end-of-year '25, so the fiscal year audit that is in process and coming to a completion has some more final numbers, and we've seen those in our conversations about enrollment. Placing that into our model then kind of allows for the projection forward to be impacted, should it need to be, by those figures, right? So we are not seeing much of a change moving forward from what had been the case previously, and included in the packet is what we consider our projection at this moment using that model with a three-year weighted average. This is the same methodology applied in the past year in our town hall meeting, for example, last May, and the idea is to, you want to kind of stay with that if it makes sense, right? And there's not been a whole lot of ups or downs necessarily, it's more of a gradual moving forward, and so with that, we feel that this is the method that we should consider using moving forward with this model. It does place our numbers, so as you look at the one that, the line item that says 24-25, those are going to be reflecting our numbers based off from the audited figures that we have going into our financial statements and what we based our calculation of revenues for, for the fiscal year '25. With that, then, it applies this methodology and projects forward the enrollment for the next few years. At the very bottom, I have placed what is our today's headcount, okay? And this is as of 9/12, and so you can kind of see and compare those numbers between where we're at right now compared to where our projection is for the '25-'26 year. You will note that as you get into the higher grades, the numbers look higher. That is not un- where we're at right now compared to where our projection is for the '25, '26 year. You will note that as you get into the higher grades, the numbers look higher. That is not uncommon at this point in time. We are before the 15-day drop period, which is a state statute that requires that you do not drop students from the rosters until we know that they have not attended for 15 days straight. So, we are learning of students that may have chosen to attend elsewhere and they have otherwise been in our rolls. So, those are things that are going to be changing in the next week or two as we pass that timeframe and the documentation that's necessary within our system takes place. I would anticipate bringing back to you next an updated figure for that, but wanted to kind of lay the groundwork as to what we're working with and the anticipated progression of how we're going to estimate our enrollment moving forward.
Questions about enrollment? Okay.
Okay, move on. All right, then, next in the packet, under the preliminary audit, preliminary audit review. We are going to be hearing from auditors next month, but in the meantime, we wanted to bring forward some information for the board to consider. We are at a point in time where your total revenues and your total expenditures have pretty much been set and have been reviewed. First of all, we calculate it, right? Then, the auditors take a look at it and do their testing of that data. They may find some things to tweak, and then it goes through a second review beyond the principal on the audit firm. That second review has not yet taken place, so we're at that first level of review right now. And so, prior to a final audit being finalized, you would... We go through the quality review, that is, that second review. What you see before you is revenues that, when you compare our fiscal year-to-date 2025 revenue calculated compared to the budget, we are 1% higher, and you can see that that is not quite... It's about one and a half million. And as you take a look at the expenditure summary that is listed, and I am on the left-hand side of the document, you will find that it's broken down by salaries and benefits, which we consider personnel, and then everything below that, purchased services, supplies, materials, capital expenditures, and other. Those tend to be the other line items that aren't necessarily as connected to people. So, in total, the budget was... Is 123.6 million, and is that revised? And then, the ut date actuals for the fiscal year '25 came in at 125.9 mil. This is 2% over the budget. In summary, then, you have at the bottom, the budget had anticipated a $957,608 spend down of fund balance. That number is higher by $786,456. This impacts our fund balance in whole and particularly in our unassigned fund balance as much as we have followed the board policy of spending down restricted funds where possible before doing the unassigned. We are still slightly below that 8% at 7.49% currently. The second side, on the right-hand side of the document, is intended to kind of break it down a little further for you so that you can see what exactly makes that up. So, the top part of it is the total revenues, just showing you a little bit more detail as far as breaking it down by taxes versus interest income, local and county revenues, state, and federal sources. You can see that we have actually been a little under what we were budgeting when it came to property taxes and investment earnings. The investment earnings probably more percentage-wise than we had hoped. The other local and county revenues, as well as state sources and federal resources, those were higher than had been budgeted. In whole, though, the total again is that 1% increase over budget. On expenditures, it's broken down now a little bit differently. Previously, we had looked on the left-hand side at it being by how are we spending the money exactly, like what is it going towards? Now, we're looking at it as to which department or program area is this being spent in. And so, we have taken and broken down a few more things here. So, we have administration, and you see district support services, elementary and secondary vocational, special ed, community ed, instructional support. When we get down to the pupil support, we've broken this down further. So, we have carved out the transportation, so you could see that separately, and in addition, on the fiscal and other fixed programs, we have that listed out. You will note that of the areas that we are concerned about, they are highlighted on the document, and it's those areas that we see the greatest amount percentage-wise with regard to over expenditure of the prepared budget, and so those are things that we'd want to kind of focus on and try and identify, you know, the whys behind and dig into that a little further. We are at the beginning phase of that.
Questions? Yes.
I see that you highlighted them, but why not highlight all of them that are over and dig into everything that isn't neutral?
It is not that we won't.
Understanding, yeah.
Yep. It's just that we wanted to basically... You could highlight too much sometimes and not have that focused, right?
Understand, yep. And then, more so, I think we've talked a lot about special education and how that really doesn't work out in our favor, how we don't always get reimbursed for that right away, it's not always a one-for-one. So, the next one down would be the district support services. Is that talking like this building itself or the people that are in this building? How does that come around?
Right.
Because I just see that that's the next one at 3% versus special education, because I understand there's not really much more that we can... Can or should cut in that area.
So, the district support services could certainly be highlighted, and I will do that for the future if you would like.
No, just a question. Please don't... I agree with you, right? Too much highlight, right? Understand completely why you highlighted those. Completely agree with you, just asking a question, yeah.
Sure. So, administration refers to like your superintendent and your principals, okay? When you talk district support services, now you're talking about the MARS department, the business department, the HR department, the curriculum.
Got it.
I'm sorry, let me back up. The curriculum is actually served down under the instructional support services.
Okay.
So, it'd be more of just those ancillary areas that support the functioning of the district as a whole.
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Other questions?
You said you were just at the beginning phases of identifying the overages. Would we expect to hear that the next meeting with... As we head towards the additive results?
Yeah, I think we'll hear the audited results and then we are digging into this. I think the challenge will be the... The real question right now is focusing... You want to know the past and the why, right? But what we really need to be focusing on is what will we do moving forward and how are we going to address that? So, I think that's really kind of what we want to try and identify things that might be part of that solution.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Mary Scott.
Mary, Director France.
Hi, thank you very much. So, Director Fredrickson had told us that special education and transportation are going to be the leading reasons why, but there were changes made to transportation because of the surprise costs. I'm wondering if you've already kind of looked into that and have adjusted that for the 2026 area or time zone, whatever.
So, I'd have to check on that as I didn't develop the '26 budget myself, but I will look into kind of what was thought through there. I can say that at the start of this year since my arrival, we have had some conversations with transportation, particularly around our invoicing and how that works and if there's a better way possibly for us to share information, but I also know that they have been very, very busy this past month, so.
Yeah, a couple of things I can add for context for everyone. We did in last year, when we were creating the budget for this year, we did include most, if not all, of the costs that we were expecting for transportation, so that should be built into the current budget. So, we should be good on that side. But like Director Ryder was talking about, the bus company, we had a failure of a product that we use, which created a tremendous amount of work for the transportation company. So, as we work through all of that, now that we hope it's all done, it's software, so I mean, software things can bounce around, but we hope that now that that's completed, we can work on making sure that we're billing things correctly or that we're doing it in the most effective way. That's the best thing that we can look at.
Chairway, if I may add just a little bit to... Kind of tying back to Director Johnson's questions, so some of the areas that we're looking into in particular that we've been foreshadowing are very volatile, some within our scope of control, but there are a lot of factors that, you know, we try to build in a buffer, and those buffers seem to just get surpassed, you know, on these two big areas. I will also just share that the transportation piece in general is not the challenge, it's actually the transportation around our special ed routing. And so, it's very specific that we're trying to analyze as to, you know, how that significant of a swing can happen within the contract. And again, as our team has alluded to, we'll be engaging in conversations about that to better understand. We are in the final year of this current contract, and so, you know, we're also intending to look to the market to say, hey, is this the best contract that we have? Or, you know, are there other opportunities for us to find different ways to optimize that transportation cost and have some better controls, you know, with the current and/or any other provider? So, those are some of the things that we're engaging in, you know, yet this fall, you know, with regards to the contract.
If I may, I just have one more. Oops, sorry.
Oh, Lisa. Okay, okay?
Go ahead.
All right.
I just wanted to make mention of the fact that on the left-hand side where it talks about purchased services, that is 111% of the budget, and so we do have that analyzed at this time, which is what makes that up, and I wanted to share those top five items, if I might. So, 46 or almost 47% of that is transportation costs. So, you'll see that the purchased services you see on the left are spread across all the other program areas you see on the right, okay? So, 47% is transportation. Next in line is our PSEO at 9%, okay? After that, our insurance, which is our property casual liability insurance, that's at almost five and a half, that's 5.5%, okay? And after that, we have two categories that combined are related to special education, federal tuition billing being one of them, which is at 4.9%, and if you add in the rest of the state special ed, that's at 2.77 when you're talking purchased services. So, you kind of see how we're already down to that 2% mark, which is the top five, right? So, that's kind of where that's looking at this point in time, so as we wanted to kind of get a sense and help you understand kind of what makes up that, some of those things we can work with, right? But what do you do about insurance costs, right? What do you do with utilities and things of that nature too, right? So, those are things that we're going to have to take a look at and consider as we move forward. I'm sorry to have interrupted.
That's great context, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. My first question is for the RFP for the bus contract, does that come back before the board? Or I do... My understanding from our last conversations that it does go online and all those things, and so what's the time to do that?
Similar to what we just did this evening with you all with regards to the commercial brokerage here, within the next month or so, we'll do the same process there and then go out to the market and then bring a list of providers back and then entertain negotiations moving forward.
Okay, appreciate that. And then, also, with the fund balance at 7.49% below the board policy of 8%, I understand, you know, from previous conversations, that ebbs and flows, but is there a corrective action plan that you'll be bringing forth to the board on sort of like how do we get that back up to, or maybe it is already, or just would love your feedback on that?
Sure. So, the budget cycle for a school district, oftentimes you want that audited financial statement information so that it becomes your new beginning balance, and with that, you already have an approved adopted budget. So, first thing you want to know is what does that do to the impact on what you had already thought to be the case for that fund balance there, right? On top of that, then, you would want to address any revisions that have to be made to your current budget, and you'd once again reflect that fund balance anticipation there based upon those new facts. So, you're looking at essentially analysis of our audit, how that impacts our budget for revision purposes, and that's our first opportunity to make that correction where possible. And then, in addition, then, if it is personnel you're speaking about, that's very difficult to do mid-year, and so that would then have to be something you'd consider when building your '26, '27 budget. Thank you.
And I guess I just have just one thing. It seems like this boils down to those two highlighted areas when you're talking about the grand scheme of things, there's some ups and downs, but it comes down to special ed and transportation. Transportation, we're trying to get our arms around, and we have some control that we can exercise perhaps in the future, but for as long as I can remember, as long as I've been in the board going back to the 90s, had this document been presented every year, that special ed thing would have been highlighted. It's virtually every year. And I'm just wondering if this is an opportunity for the board... I don't like being in the position of being reactionary, I'm not blaming. I'd like to be... Have the board be part of a proposed solution. I mean, I look at this and I think, man, if that thing just was 2%, we'd be right on. If we could get that five down to two, that overage, and I'm wondering, is it something as simple as doing your due diligence, coming up with a forecast, and just adding 8% every year just to cover yourself? Or in the past, we've used different things, but the board's kind of been involved in that, so that if next year, we come together on some kind of agreed-upon plan, it comes back and nothing's changed, we kind of have some skin in the game. We don't necessarily have any other position to react to it, we have a position to refocus, let's try something else. And I'm just wondering, you know, if this is an opportunity for us to maybe use that approach moving forward, because again, this is year after year after year. I'm not asking for that thing to be zero, but again, in this particular case, if it was cut in half, we would have been really, really close on the budget. And that's the frustrating part for me, now that it's anybody's fault, it just... It seems like, man, we do all this work and the ups and downs, and if we could just nail that forecast, which I know was very difficult, we'd be right where we want to be.
I think that there is two sides of the budget we need to be considering too as we move forward. There's always the expenditure side, which is what we see focused and highlighted, and then there's also the revenue side. So, when considering our '26, '27 budget, it is something we need to take a look at as our expenditures, in many cases, as you take a look at the current economy, there are many pressures and increases across the board, so we can manage and address that to a degree, and I hope that we can do enough to make a really big indent, but we should also be considering what possible other revenue sources might there be and how do we address this on an ongoing, long-term basis, because this, you know, you can't just focus on the one year, we also need to be looking out further beyond that.
I appreciate that. Charles, one more?
Yes, just one comment. I just... I really appreciate the document that you provided here. Need to read?
Thank you.
And I would just add one more thing, I'm sorry. Your comment about the long-term forecast, will you be updating and providing a three-to-five year forecast like we've seen in the past based on like the new enrollment models and all the things? Because I think that's really helpful as well to get our arms around that.
You already see a part on the enrollment piece. With that goes then the projections for the revenues, right? And then additionally, there would be the expenditures. Now, there are always certain factors that are in process as we go through this that you're going to need to kind of make some estimates on, and so that would be kind of where it's really about building those expenditure estimates, like what kind of percentage are you using for the cost of insurance increases or the cost for salaries and such? So, those are the assumptions that need to be built so that we can then see what that impact is and on a long-term basis what that has. I will caution you, long-term budgets projected out do not always look the best, right? So, it is something that we have to kind of know that in school districts is often the case, because you will find yourself making corrections on an annual basis to offset things so that it is not as dire as it may appear at first. So, it's what we need to do, though, is gauge exactly what kind of and how much of those adjustments do we have to be looking at from an annual basis.
Just, did you have something?
I did, thank you.
I did. Thank you. And we're going to be talking about this later tonight as well with the, you know, boundary changes and things like that. With the closing, I mean, it's, it's not really closing a school only because it's, you know, we're, I mean, yes, as a neighborhood school. Do you foresee kind of a dent in this transportation, you know, fund going down with those boundary changes? It's, sorry, two-parter. That's A. B, knowing we absolutely have to get the RFP for the transportation, you know, services going, does it make sense to wait until after we determine what the boundaries will look like? Or is that not, or would that not be much of a factor? And if that question, maybe I can ask that later on in the evening too. It's fine.
Director Holstead, if I'll tackle the second part of that question first. That's part of our pace of looking at this RFP is to better understand what will our RFP entail? Because we want to be able to understand our boundaries, how many routes. Because if that, if that changes, a proposal that we get too early might look different based upon, you know, some of that. So we want to kind of get a sense of where that would land. So that's why we're still timing, I think, for the fall. But it'd be more that later fall, mid to later fall, so that we have a more accurate depiction of who we are as a district, so that they can competitively analyze and say, this is what we believe we could bring in based upon the students, based upon the amount of schools, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And for part A, if I might, yes. Part A with regard to our consultation with the transportation department and what that looks like for our boundaries and such. So Dan and I have set meeting, a meeting with them to go over the options and scenarios that we have. We have our finance and operations committee tomorrow morning. And then our meeting will be subsequent to that later, I think, this week or next week. I can't recall off the top of my head. And so the idea is to make sure that we kind of walk through those scenarios and understand fully kind of what that impact might be from their lens, to make sure that they have that opportunity to share that with us.
Thank you.
Jessica, you have something?
I mean, kind of going off a couple of other questions, but just trying to understand like the timing of which, when we would make any sort of 25, 26 budget adjustments to reflect, you know, any of the findings. And just again, kind of went back and as I was seeing these actuals, looking at the budget for this year and like even transportation, you know, we have a budget of like 7.1. And, you know, our actuals this year were 8.8. So, you know, are we setting ourselves up to fail for next year? At what point do we make those adjustments or additional cuts in other places if we have to?
Yeah. So there is a budget timeline for the 26, 27. And I'm just going to pull it up here quick. The anticipation is that we would be bringing forward the audit discussion. And that is in October. You have your truth and taxation hearing as well in November. And it looks like in December is the timeline for us to be reviewing our 25, 26 budget.
And seeing what adjustments we can make at that point in time.
Okay. I mean, is that too late? Do we have opportunity to do things in advance? I don't know. I'm just asking the question if that's something we need to look at.
Say more about what you mean.
Well, I mean, if there are findings that we need to make immediate adjustments on, do we need to look at doing that?
I would say that right now, given where we're at, some of the conversations that we've had as a senior leadership team is figuring out what, like typically, we might have slowing conversations down in like February. We've had some of our initial conversations as the senior leadership team to identify, looking at our budgets and then identifying where we might be able to make some adjustments that we would be bringing forward. Or, you know, particularly with like purchase services, et cetera. So some of those are the things that we can leverage control for right now. So we are looking at that as a team and, you know, taking some more prudent measures to see where we can forecast, where we might have to make some adjustments from an expenditure side, as well as, you know, any future conversations of revenue sides.
Director Boy.
Can you give us some context on, in your experience, and this is for whoever wants to answer it as far as our senior leadership, between Dr. Thomas and Director Reiter, can you give me some context on when, or if ever, adjustments are made to a school year when the budget's already set? I mean, given that 80% of our budget is staff members, that doesn't leave a lot of room for adjustments. And so I'm just wondering, you know, kind of to piggyback off of your question as like, you know, how do we be looking at things immediately? Just maybe some more context on what that could even look like. Does that make sense? Did I, did I make that?
Yep. So from my experience, the one thing that makes a huge difference is overall awareness. Making sure people are aware of where we're at with things and what that means to every department, every school site, and making sure people understand kind of the why behind the future conversations, right? And so I think when you, when you talk about budget adjustments, that awareness does lie in the back of the mind, right? Even when you're doing day-to-day stuff. So I think that's an important factor for us. And it needs to be something that people know what that impact might mean to their budget. So there are a lot of small percentages as I look and analyze things here. Small can add up to large in some cases. But when you are talking about significant adjustment, you are talking about personnel in most, most, most cases with school district budgets. And so that's very difficult to do midstream. Can you potentially not fill certain positions that may have been budgeted but are not necessarily yet filled? That's a possibility in some cases. It's just a question of whether or not then you're fulfilling what is the absolute that needs to happen as well. And so I think it's just a matter of every department, every site's going to have to really consider exactly what can they do to assist as we try and shave off what we can throughout the year, right? And not spend what we don't need to spend.
I appreciate that context. And then to maybe expand just a little bit farther, I'm curious if there's any, if you can give a, give us a glimpse of what positions or what percentages of positions have not yet been filled? Like what would that even look like if, if that is a scenario? And I don't expect that answer right now, but I'm, I'm wondering if that's something that, you know, would be helpful to look at. I mean, we're only a few weeks into the school year and everyone's probably getting their bearings. But I would be curious to know how many positions are not, are not filled that we budgeted for.
Yeah, Director Boy, and that is something that our team is looking at. You know, the good news is that, you know, compared to other years and even some of other districts, we've done pretty well with regards to filling our positions this year. But that is something that we could look into and bring back for future conversation with the board. But I don't have that, you know, this evening.
Director Vrenz.
So I'd like to piggyback a little bit on the comments and questions from Chair White and Director Mason. Because, and this is part of the conundrum I think we're in. And Dr. Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in our budget update in December of last year, we were notified that transportation was going to be over and special education was going to be over. And the special education, the transportation was also with the current contract and fuel prices, special education, transportation was more than we anticipated. But in general, the special education was due to two factors. One, because the way we're reimbursed is a year in arrears. And then also because we had more students that qualified for it that we hadn't anticipated. But there was also something else in there. And that was that once we notified, you know, we didn't have a lot of wiggle room there because of the way that it is a restricted area. So overestimating from it, given the cross subsidy, means that we would have to take money preemptively out of other services that were already at a limit. So, and if you do that, then you're not spending on actual, you know, you know, regular instruction and other areas. And like Director Boyian mentioned, we have very little variable costs in here. So I'm just kind of wondering, what are limitations for being able to put that buffer into special education? Is that even possible?
Well, you know, yes, you're right on what you just shared. And the one piece also from the reimbursement standpoint is that some of the reimbursement was lowered. So that also impacted budgets after budgets were already set from the last legislative session. So to your point, yes, we are a little bit at the mercy of some of the factors that aren't, that are not within our control. And to your point, it is a bit of a teeter-totter or, you know, robbing the left to pay the right or vice versa. Something is going to give. And to the point that was made earlier, with our budget being, you know, 80, 83% people, when we lose people, we lose programming. And so it's a blessing and a curse to try to solve for this. But we will strive, you know, as we always have been, trying to find ways to optimize our resources, which is one of our priority areas, and within the confines of our given revenues and some expenditures that we don't have a choice. We, you know, we don't choose to turn on the lights or run water or, you know, transport kids, et cetera. So it's a bit of a puzzle. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be naive here. It is one that as a team, we're leaning in to try to find ways that we can, you know, pull back or dial in various resources as much as we possibly can. But ultimately, I do think this is, you know, going to be a potential conversation that we may have to have also with the board, and that is the revenue side of things and what does that entail. So again, just, I think it's the both and conversations that's, that's kind of staring us all down right now.
I think it'll be really helpful to see that cash flow report come October because then we'll get a really good idea of, you know, where we're trending for the year as far as July, August, September. Because at the end of the day, we do have a policy 701 that basically states that our expenditures cannot exceed our revenues. And while I understand that it ebbs and it flows, right? It's something that we've been challenged with as a board, with working within the guidelines of that budget. So I think having that cash flow report will be helpful for us to kind of keep an eye on that and see where we're at as the year goes along. So, thank you.
I can appreciate the desire for the cash flow report. I will caution the fact that it does not account for accruals at the end of the year. And so that's where you'll find, even if you look at the cash, the cash flow report as of say, May, and take a look at what that looks like at the end of June, there's going to be significant difference because of those accruals. So that, it does give you a good indication of what you're spending for sure. But just keep that in mind that the accruals are not reflected and that can swing things. Both the accrual for your revenue calculation, as well as then the payables that come in at the end. Because typically you find vendors are lagged a bit. And so we're, you know, in June, we're paying not just May bills, but also then June bills have to get paid, right? And that all gets put back into the previous year as accruals, which wouldn't have been reflected in the cash flow. So I appreciate what you're asking for.
Thank you.
Okay. Then, under budget priorities?
Yeah, just as a reminder to the board, as we go into the budget development cycle, we have been talking about the setting of some board priorities, like what are some non-negotiables, or things that the board would like to protect as we develop, you know, future budget cycles. It's a conversation that we're going to engage in tomorrow morning a little bit with our finance and ops advisory council. But just putting that on the, as a placeholder for the coming to the board, you know, probably in the next month, after we have some discussion in committee. And then we'll be bringing some of that discussion back to the board for you all to have, you know, some determinations as to, you know, what are the things that you want to protect as we build out a budget.
And as of right now, I'm continuing that to the October study session.
I don't believe policy 701 says our expenditures cannot exceed revenue. I believe it says we have to do the best job we can. Because we don't have a choice sometimes.
Okay. All right. So prepare for the 22nd as we start to think about things that we're going to keep off the table if at all possible. All right, moving down to student data. Director Anderson and team.
Good evening. Pardon my delay as I get used to how to find the materials on the... Yeah. Can you help me, Martha? That is not my, that's not my slideshow. No. Thank you. Well, once again, good evening. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, Chair White, Superintendent Thomas, board directors. Tonight, I'm pleased to be with you once again for another check-in related to student data and curriculum updates. Tonight, we'll continue our focus on high school math and elementary literacy and a check-in on our curriculum review cycle. I will offer that I feel confident in my early review and time here that our review process for both high school math and elementary literacy are aligned with Board Policy 606, which has to do with the review and selection of learning resources in our district. And in particular, that policy recognizes the expertise of our professional staff to be a primary involved stakeholder set in formulating recommendations of instructional materials to the Board of Education. And tonight, we're here to share an update to the board with the aid of some special guests who are members of that professional staff. They'll share some of the steps that we've taken to get to where we are now per our curriculum review cycle. And I know that for both high school math and elementary literacy, we're in the process as outlined here, and particularly focused on analyzing and developing curriculum. So with regard to high school math, this team process, I'm pleased tonight to introduce to you two reps from our professional staff, Mr. Dan Byer and Ms. Janine Messnick, math leaders at the high school, who've been heavily involved in this math selection process. And without further ado, I'd love to invite them to the, yes, welcome.
Thank you for having us. I guess we would invite you to ask questions as they come up. So feel free to just give us a holler here when you've got a question on this. And we can go back a slide. We actually started in 2022 as a whole K-12 group, looking through what our process would be, where we were at, gathering information from stakeholders, students, teachers, and then figuring out our next steps. And due to funding, we are just kind of that third tier in this process. So we're coming in at the end as a high school staff. So probably one of the biggest things that we have for questions is, you know, what is new math? Or why is this new math? And I think that... And, um, I think that, uh, it's probably best to understand it as this. Instead of just our large list of standards that they had before, um, our state is being very purposeful about making sure that students, that they've detailed, that students, um, are understanding how to use math, not just do math. That there is a bigger focus on understanding the why, which we appreciate and prefer. So, um, there's a lot more emphasis on reasoning and thinking mathematically, instead of just, um, I guess, on their tests that you would see, like MCA tests, you know, here is a formula, now I'm gonna use it, that type of scenario. So it's, um, looking deeper into situations, thinking mathematically. And in our process, um, we looked at several materials, uh, as we usually would do. Um, we attended presentations on all of those, narrowed our res- or resources down. And in spring two twenty, or twenty twenty-five, um, we're field testing this, um, this year. Actually, we are field testing this year, so I think that should be...
No, no, that, that's correct. We're talking about, we decided...
In twenty twenty-five, yeah. This past spring, we did. And now we are field testing this year. So our resources that we've looked at and attended, um, presentations on, I believe there's seven there. And instead of going through each, you know, reason why we eliminated, um, probably just one of the biggest reasons why we chose the SAVIS, um, resources, is because we felt they had the best balance between, um, that normal academic and algebraic rigor, and then having real-life, um, application with that as well. And you'll see, um, if you would like to see, I guess, we, we have a, a lesson here. Um, it's just a geometry one that we could all look at, and so you can see how it's possibly different from what you would think, uh, normal math classes might be, or, or at least what the emphasis is.
It would be similar to how you might expect to, a math course to look like.
Yep. So it, it really probably shows you the blend of emphasis of, we want that algebraic rigor, and also that real-life understanding.
And so the big thing with the, with the whole SAVIS piece with it, try to model and discuss, try and get, get that little Kickstarter, that little brainstorm, okay, where are we going towards at the beginning? When we have our lessons that involve problem solvings, getting into that algebraic component of it, why are we doing this piece? Try to get that understanding. Some topics are obviously harder to make that connection to than others, so we work through it. But also give students that opportunity to work with one another, ask us questions, giving them that guided time to be able to work on stuff, confer with their students, confer with us as teachers as we're going along after we go through our lessons in the course. The example that we have here is from a geometry course. Uh, we chose the geometry one, because we, at the end, we could show the difference between the honors piece, the, and the general course, and the, uh, how they treat things in terms of the standards with it. Here, the stuff here is taken, uh, part of a presentation slide that's given in the geometry courses. The, the stuff that you see here, the problems that you see here are taken directly from the SAVIS curriculum. But that, that first piece with this lesson dealing with midpoint and then tying into, um, distance, tie it into scenario, tie it into the layout of a room, putting it in that coordinate plane. Tanya wants to center a picture along the back wall, how do you find the point at the center between A and B? We start kids off with that basic piece, where if we're working in that horizontal, pretty easy for most students to be able to figure out where that midpoint is gonna be. But when you transition that then to the next piece, where she wants to place, uh, a lamp halfway between chairs at points C and D, well, now when you've got that diagonal, how are we looking at figuring out where that middle is gonna be in that scenario? Giving students the time to process and think on their own, come up with their own ideas. Some students are gonna be able to make that connections with how they found it in between, that middle for A and B from C and D, trying to use that same concept for both the vertical and horizontal changes with it. Tying it into a more generic case, leading into that opportunity where, so now if we're given coordinates, instead of working in a scenario where they're working with those grid lines, you can still work with the grid lines here to be able to still take that same opportunity. If we've got coordinates here at negative three, two, and four, negative two, how are we able to come up with that midpoint? And by the time you get to this point, a lot of students are trying to, are kind of making that connection on where we get in that middle. How are we looking at that relationship between the X coordinates and the Y coordinates to be able to get that? Which then, we can then tie into that formula that you're used to seeing and with, from your experiences with it. Because we're not always gonna be able to have that grid. We're not always gonna be able to plot it out and work with it, and how can we make those connections to, uh, the formula that we have to be able to figure out that midpoint? Along there, taking it up a step from that, not only can we apply the same process in terms of midpoint, how can we do it in terms of other ratios? And here, we're looking at the coordinates, applying it as a ratio of three to two, and how we can take the same concept of looking at that horizontal change and that vertical change, if we partition it off into, if you have that ratio of three to two, sections of five, five equal parts, well, I want three of those equal parts, and then two of those equal parts to be able to figure out where on that line would that point be that divides it up into that ratio of three to two? Being able to take that same concept of the midpoint, which has that built-in formula, but coming up with a more, uh, a higher level application for that. And then here, not even given the grid piece, how we're taking that comp, that, uh, concept, applying it into a more generic approach for that as well. But then tying it into distance as well. And starting off, if we got points out there that are at negative five, four, Q's at seven, five, if we were to put those points on there, negative one, two, three, four. Do I get all the way over there? Can't count, it's two, three, four, five. Up four, one, two, three, four, seven, negative five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, two, three, four, five. If we've got those two points, if we had a, that segment in between, how are we then gonna be able to figure out what the length that is? Most kids are familiar with the Pythagorean theorem. Before getting them into that formula that would apply when you have coordinates, okay, let's tie it back into something that they're familiar with. Okay, let's make that right triangle that we have. And how can we take that right triangle to then figure out the length of that hypotenuse, which essentially the distance formula is. Distance formula is just Pythagorean theorem. So as we, we able to figure out that length from the, that horizontal length from P to Q, we got that length of twelve, that vertical length, that length of nine, applying the Pythagorean theorem, nine squared plus twelve squared gives us that length of that hypotenuse squared. Kids are able to make that connection between the two. From there, some kids are gonna fa- fall in that the entire time as we work with that. They, they'd like to be able to tie it into the Pythagorean theorem. And did you click the right thing there, so we can continue moving it?
I feel like I did.
Okay. Oh, and then all that stuff's still on there.
Nope, I got it, I got it.
Thank you. But then tying that concept into the distance formula, where some kids don't always wanna draw the right triangle to be able to come up with that. Tying that in, also putting in a little proof for those kids at a higher level that are looking for, okay, why do we have that formula? Why is it set up? How do we make those connections for that? In here, we included different types of problems in terms of what the honors teacher gives and what the, uh, general geometry teacher gives. These problems here are straight out of the SAVIS curriculum. You look at the different types, how they're looking at, they're able to use that, uh, graphical representation. They're able to use the distant, the formulas with it. Here with the honors one, tying in the different pieces, they don't necessarily go in the same order as the book. Okay, but they pick out those key pieces from that. And then with the, uh, general one, they spend a couple of days on this because of the multi-topics on there, sometimes focusing on the midpoint, sometimes focusing on the, or, no, sorry, first starting with the distance, sorry, the midpoint, then going to the distance formula with that. Uh, to be able to break that down into two different concepts, the problems that you see here, the application problems that you see here are straight from the SAVIS text as well.
Do you have any questions? So this, so this is what it would look like in a day, and we, we really do like the resource, because it's, our, our text prior to this is probably a two thousand twelve copyright, which would be more along the lines of, um, this is the distance formula, let's use it twelve times, that idea. You know, and it's just, it's, this is much, um, more engaging for students, and, and much more of what we bring, we want to have our teachers bring to the classroom.
I would just say, um, my son was in one of these classes last year, and, um, I know the teacher supplemented with this. So do you have any feedback based on, um, you know, the supplementing with SAVIS last year? Like what you saw, or, I mean?
Yep. So at the high school level, it's a little more difficult, um, the farther, the farther along in the curriculum you are. So was your, depending on where your son was at. So if it's Algebra II, then there was much more just supplementing, right? They were, they were trying, they were testing, piloting, using resources, whatever you wanna call it. Um, and being the third year, like the third text in that series, there's a lot of information and, um, just kind of the way that you're working through, the way a student would be engaged with this information. It's, it assumes, like that text is assuming those students have worked through those other two years. And so teachers were really heavily looking at, okay, what did Algebra I look like? What was geometry looking like, so that we can kind of marry those two in Algebra II? And then they're doing more this year in Algebra II. I think the easiest spot to start was Algebra I, because they assume as writers of this text that that's the first in their series, so to speak. And so it was a great entry point, and I think, uh, Algebra I, you also taught that, had the most success with looking at all their resources and, um, working with students and, I don't know if you can speak to that.
I think with any new curric- curriculum that you get, there's always assumptions that that curriculum takes that they've had previously. And no matter what we decide to go with, there's always gonna be some supplementing that goes along with it. We, we saw when we were working with the, the Algebra I, that we needed a little bit more in terms of, uh, properties of exponents. They, they do a lot with the, uh, a lot of stuff with, working with polynomials, but they didn't necessarily cover the, as in-depth as we had preferred with it in terms of, okay, doing properties of exponents, when we're multiplying, what do we do with our exponents? We divide, what do we do with our exponents? So we supplemented that piece in to account for that. I think you would get that with any curriculum that you would work with.
Does that kind of make sense or check with what you're asking?
Uh, no, absolutely. I, I think some of the feedback I heard is that, um, the, the SAVIS curriculum was, was very, was rigorous, right? And some of the, um, how do you say, students coming out of middle school may not have gotten what they needed to prepare them for this type of rigor. And so I'm also curious, my second question is, um, with the, the change of using CPM in the middle school, knowing that that curriculum is very different than, um, sort of like the core foundations of math, how does it align with SAVIS, like from an alignment standpoint? Like, are they going, I guess you can't answer what they're learning in middle school, but had, I guess, are you, what are you seeing early on from some of the kids coming out of middle school that maybe are freshmen this year or sophomore this year, who had CPM, and now they're piloting SAVIS, like?
I think we all could probably answer to what they're learning in middle school, actually, because it's really state standards-based.
Right.
Right? So, um, I, I think, um, possibly the hesitation is if, if you, if a person would think the packaging doesn't feel like what they're expecting. However, the math really is probably present. We find that when our students are coming into the high school, we not only have students from our two middle schools, but from many other places. And our students are, I guess I'm biased, but we, we, we feel that students that are coming from our middle school are, are well-prepared for what we are working with at our high school level. Um, I...
Let me, let me, let me give you one experience that I had, because I'm, I'm working with freshmen this year with, within it. And with, with some of the word problems, some of the problem-solving piece with it, one piece that I'm seeing an improvement with has been their reasoning. The way that they, they, they may not set things up in an algebraic fashion, but they're able to tell me their, what they're thinking. They're able to tell me, okay, how did you come up with this answer? Oh, well, I did this piece. Well, I had here, I took this amount away, whatever I had left, I divided by what I had left over. I, I didn't necessarily see that from other students previously. I, I, I've been impressed with what I have seen thus far with that logical reasoning piece that the number of students that I've had have been doing. I've, I've seen that. That, that's one piece that I've enjoyed seeing from students this year so far.
But are they able to, um, like, master the content, I guess, basically? And the reason I, I reason I, because we've hea- I've heard some rumblings from, um, you know, we're only two weeks in, but some initial testing, not good, students testing forty percent, fifty percent. I get it, it's the first week of school. So, I mean, I guess we'll just have to keep an eye on that to, to see how it plays out. Um, yeah. Then my other question is, is with this curriculum, is there any science behind it that you can share as far as like why you picked it? Where is it successful? Is it implemented in other districts where they've act, they've seen proficiency scores rise? Like, why did you, why is your confidence behind this particular curriculum as being something that you'd like our district to invest in?
So as we worked through our process, um, our staff had, and I don't think we have it on here, it's just elimination for other ones, but we went through pros and cons for each, for each, um, text series that we looked at. Um, and we did feel that SAVIS had the best blend of everything that we were looking for, first of all. I do know that, I think Gwen ha- and I'm sure she doesn't have it here, but has a list of, um, and actually, I've seen it too. There is a long list of, um, places in Minnesota that use, uh, the SAVIS curriculum, the Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II series that we use. Uh, they have other, I believe it's a Pearson company, so I mean, they have a lot of other things. But specifically, that one is used frequently in other places. And the science behind that, I mean, it is, it is mapped to our Minnesota State Standards, which is something that is an absolute must for us. So, um, with that embedded, that is like our number one need, concern. And, and then from there, we were able to say, here are the other reasons why we prefer it. So, um, I am certain that if we asked, probably the SAVIS site would have more information than that, but, um, we would go so far as to see the mapping of their curriculum with our Minnesota State Standards.
Charles?
Thank you both for being here. Uh, really appreciate it. So Lisa brought up a, a few things. So the first Algebra II test, right? There, there was an email that was sent out, you know, not a lot of people did really well. Can, do either of you teach Algebra II? Can you kind of elaborate on that? It was just a, it was a big concern that I got.
Okay.
Kind of bombarded on that today.
Neither one of us teach Algebra II. Um, I guess we can ask about that. But typically, when emails like that go out, what their teachers are probably hoping for is that students are going to use later time, our embedded time. And a lot of times, there's probably a connection to students who may not be finished with their homework a hundred percent all the time before they're taking a test. So it's probably an invitation to, hey, please come on in, let's make sure that we're getting our homework finished first. So that when you're taking your test and retaking, I'm assuming there's an offer for a retake with that. Yep, because it, it makes a big difference if we can figure out where things went wrong, support that productive struggle, and then help them get to where they need to be so that they can start our next, um, studies.
It just references the new curriculum, and that's why I brought it up, so I didn't know if either of you, you guys taught Algebra II, so that's why I figured I would, I would ask.
I would say just like routinely, if, if emails go home to parents that are that, it's usually, you know, like this is probably one of the first times that students are, hey, it's kind of an all-call. Let's come on in, let's get help. And more than likely, I'm assuming, there's typically a connection between, if you didn't do all your homework, it's hard to perform well on the test. So I'm assuming there's an invitation to complete homework. I don't, I haven't seen it because we are not privy to what's, I don't have any kids in Algebra II right now, so I'm sorry about that.
No, 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 perfectly fine. Took the opportunity because you guys are there.
For sure.
Next, I really liked the way you said, use math, not just do math. Now, is everything that, what Savis is going towards, is that also aligning towards the ACT and the SAT? And do we have, and, and, do we have any data to back that up? I understand you guys might not have that, Dr. Anderson might be able to provide that to us. With, with other schools that have, have this implemented longer. Because that's obviously, some of our students aren't going to take the MCAs, right? But they're going to take the ACT and the SAT. We don't want to implement a curriculum that's going to set them up for failure in the future.
Our, our math teachers have an overwhelming passion.
I'm sure they do.
For making sure that our students perform well on the ACT because now they all have the option to do that in school.
Yes.
Right? And I feel that we do an outstanding job making sure that we map towards making sure that our ACT is something that's reachable for all of our students, first of all. And then specifically in this text, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they actually have, you know, like a portion, I think it's actually on here.
I did see it in the, in the honors geometry.
Test prep.
Yep.
Yep, which I will say, I'm not going to lie, most, most textbook companies do. However, this specific resource has just a lot of buildup to build the reasoning, then come back in with that algebra, build the reasoning again, and then come back in with that algebra. And in this case, it was even geometry applicable. So when a student is then working towards something like ACT-based, they are just that much stronger in what they're doing because of the way that it's introduced, so.
Okay. And just to jump in on that, other districts that we know have implemented, and we can check how long they've been implementing. And perhaps some math results, Edina, South Wash, West St. Paul, Shakopee, Matamidi, Ember Grove, Orano are some of those that are on that list. And certainly we can pay attention to how that implementation is going. Yeah, and even any correlation on the, on the, those scores would be phenomenal. I think I had two more. I know you gave us a list of, of basically what you had, why you didn't like them, and I really appreciate the list, and then why you and Savis, right? And then we discussed last week, like this is basically this quarters, and if I'm using the wrong terminology on that, I apologize. Semester, okay. But if this doesn't work, do you have a backup plan? Or do you have something else that you're willing to try? If this doesn't go the way that you guys are talking about right now? Because I think you guys enjoy this, it sounds good. But it's not, I just want to make sure that we're preparing, just in case if there's something else that you've seen out there that we have as a backup. If I'm not being clear, please just.
Nope, I think you're being clear. Do you want to go back to that list? If we're talking about as a, as a quote-unquote backup, I think that, and maybe, like statistically, I, I think you can't just give it a semester and say, well, that's not good enough. With the depth and breadth of opportunities that the curriculum provides. I, professionally, our, our department does not feel that the other ones probably do not stand up enough to the Savis one. So then we would want to find out where, why, and what might we need to slightly supplement to make sure that we are making the change we need to make. As opposed to saying, well, this sure didn't work, let me try another one. And then what happens if we have that same feeling? And then all of a sudden you went through three years of semesters at a time of, yeah, our kids didn't like that one. So I would prefer, and I, I believe our department is fully capable and used to looking through curriculum, understanding that probably there isn't that magic bullet. And that you need to find probably some supplementation along the way, just because of where, where things are at, maybe timing. Even all the way down to, you know, we, we had three snow days and so now we're going to do this differently. So I, I think that there are ways to study where students are at, still use this as a resource. And then I would prefer to make sure that K-12, like that is actually something that would be a curriculum discussion that we just say, oh, no, I guess we were wrong, we need to turn around and change. There's got to be a statistical analysis that says we need to give something more than just a semester. Am I probably correct? Yeah.
I really appreciate that.
So it would make more sense to, to live and grow and breathe with the students because that's typically what we're used to.
Hundred percent.
For instance, as we've been dealing with the 2012 copyright, we've had to do a lot of living, breathing, and growing with them. And it becomes almost unmanageable with the amount of real life you need to bring to something where it's, the difference would be what they would have is, here's the distance formula, you know, do it fifteen times. It's just not something that we would want our students doing in this day and age.
Absolutely, I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's great, thank you.
Director Johnson, I'll just, you know, add also, in my years of adopting various curricula and, you know, different disciplines, et cetera. As we've talked about, there, there's not a perfect curriculum, so to speak. So there's not been a curriculum that has been adopted that hasn't been supplemented or heavily amended. So if we're not bringing in additional resources, maybe there are certain units that we're saying, you know what, this unit just misses the mark, so we're going to actually rewrite this as a math team. And just amend the current resources as well. So this or anything else, that's always going to be par for the course.
Last thing, where are you guys at, or where's the teams at as far as group testing and group work when it comes to math? Because I have two students in high school math.
You have two kids that are in high school?
I do.
Do I have them? I'm just kidding.
They'll let you know.
Awesome.
And that's something that they experienced previously. And it wasn't, just wondering if, if that's going to be an ongoing thing or if it's something that you're trying? Or how does that look? Individual work versus group work, especially when it comes to testing?
We're both, we can both answer that kind of, because it's, it's a.
I really appreciate it.
It, it, it varies by course. You, you can see some courses that have built-in, some call them collaborative problem sets, where they're.
Typically at the honors level, actually.
Honors level, but I know there, there are some that, that, just to get, to get kids talking with one another, being able to problem solve, be able to work with it. And those I, in my understanding, from what I'm familiar with, those are not assessments. Those are, those are going under the formative component of it, not in terms of a test. I, I could be wrong with that because I, I don't, I don't work in the other, the teams that deal with that component of it. From my understanding, each, there are tests that are, that each is based off of the students' own work for that. But we do have teachers that, I can think of a bunch of groups that set it, set apart days that, okay, here's a couple of challenge problems, here's, here's a few pieces. Can you apply the stuff that we've done into a different scenario, not the same thing that you've worked with? Are you able to work with one another to be able to problem solve, come up with the solutions based off of that?
And, and our teachers choose things in teams, right? So maybe a, a team is working through certain things, but in the end, I, I think what we really need is our students to be flexible and nimble in how they are moving throughout the math that they're learning. So there's predominantly regular testing, right? Which is what we do at the high school. However, we absolutely need our students to be able to talk to each other and maybe there is a group test. It is not frequent, I would say, by, by many of our teams. However, I could not stand here and say there never is one, because I bet there's one somewhere around there. Also, there is lots of, like if you're talking assessing, lots of formative assessing students are in groups because then they're able to brainstorm, work through problems. And, and it's just, it's helpful, that's what you want your kids to be able to do, right? To be able to analyze together, talk through things, come up with ideas as a team, work through that. And then we also need that balance of preparing them for their next steps. So like they need to be able to take tests alone on an ACT, right? So as they're growing, there's certain things that they need to be able to do. So I feel like our math team models both environments well. And there's a time and place probably for everything, all, all of both of those scenarios. However, we probably, if it's coming to like an assessment that's, you know, summative assessment, I would say, for the most part, by and large, it's, those are individual. And I don't know if, that's probably just an age-appropriate idea for where we're at, which is why it is. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it's, but both, both probably happen, it's just probably more heavier formative. And still probably maybe a few summatives in there, we can't, I mean, but.
We can't speak for each team.
But it is something I think that should be.
I'm not sure if you want to say more about the difference between formative and summative?
Yes.
You know, assessment for learning versus of.
Yep, so if you're in my classroom, for instance, we would do something in groups so that I, I can have formative data, they can have formative data. So that we can say, you know, on this problem set, we're going to see where we're at, where our thinking is at, students can brainstorm together, problem solve, explain reasoning to each other. And during those, they don't have like a group piece of work, every student is still doing their own. And in the end, it's more of learning the how, the why, this is what I did, that's what you did, oh, we came up with the same answer, is that still okay? I guess it is. And so it's, it's more of being able to talk about it and using math as opposed to just doing math salad, we'll call it, right? Which, you know, that reasoning gets built in. And then there are other times where students absolutely have to do their own test and they're working on it. So, and most of mine are like that, but it's just the formative is more of like a daily work type idea. And then, and that is like an assessment for learning. So students know where they're at, teachers know where they're at, and then we can make adjustments on what else we need to help with, what else we may need to work on, same for students, they know where they're at, what else do they need to study? And then a summative assessment would be, you know, we're at the end of a chapter, we're at the end of a unit, now this is your grade, like you, you've learned it and this is where you're sitting. A lot of times in my classes, for where my students are at, I feel like their next step is really college, so they're going to turn that into one more formative. Because if you didn't get it, we need to get it now, so then we're going to go back and relearn. So I kind of reinforce that, but like if you're in Dan's AP Calc, that's a different thing because there is a final test for that, for AP, so.
Yeah, so with all the, the formative, that building block stuff leading up to it, we, we have those summative assessments where students are assessing students off of, okay, do you know all the derivative rules? Are you able to take the applications of the derivative to apply it to this situation, dealing with rates of change and whatnot? During a regular class of mine, in there, kids are working together all the time, passing ideas back and forth, how'd you get here, what'd you do here with it? The, the, the formative is that development piece, the summative being your typical tests, quizzes, whatever, there, that, that assessment for that.
Before you start, if we're about forty-three minutes into the hour allotted for the, this discussion on both topics, so if Lisa, you can ask one more and then we'll move on to elementary literacy.
So AP same, they have the same curriculum, Savis, AP or no?
A, a lot of times, and this would be for most, most curriculums, that, that they will build their curriculum for Algebra I, Algebra II, Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. Beyond that, courses beyond there, we typically go out to other different, okay, what resource do we want for AP Calc? What resource do we want for AP Statistics? What resource do we want for the pre-college Algebra course that we have? Most of them, they, they have that building block for that first one, but then we don't have, but then we piece together pieces off of that. Have we looked at, people are always looking at stuff with that, I can tell you the, like for me personally with the AP Calc, I, I like what we currently have. If you were to compare it to the current updated version of it, it's the same thing. Different colored textbook, problems are exactly the same in, in terms of it, but that, but that varies per course.
This doesn't impact the AP?
No, no.
And then, sorry, I wanted to, quick one. We, I was able to observe both the Bridges and the CPM, I'd love to come observe a classroom, don't want it to be disruptive at all, but I don't know if you guys are open to board members coming in and observing during this first semester, during this pilot specifically?
So we can, yeah, we can chat through. I will say the AP, it's, those are college texts and like, for example, the AP pre-Calc has the same parent company, Pearson, as Savis. But those college textbooks wouldn't have the same type of writers as high school, so.
But also the college, the, the AP ones have to be college board approved as well in order to use them. So which ours are?
I guess I would say this, just so, I mean, they're really truly in what we do, there's kind of a time and place for a little of everything of what we're doing. So feel free to reach out with questions because sometimes maybe what you're hearing, it's, it's like really this in the grand scheme of things. And, and it's probably good to have a, you know, a perspective on it, I guess, so.
So I appreciate, appreciate you guys coming, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, just let Jessica have one question, then we're going to move on to reading.
Sorry, so the, the math pathways, I was trying to recall, so I was just trying to understand if we're looking at this for Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. I think our current pathway ends, you know, Math Six, Pre-Algebra, Algebra I, going into high school, nine-year in Geometry. So then are they just starting this curriculum in Geometry, is that, is that correct? Or how will this, and that kind of relates to the CPM and how it aligns question, but how does that pathway look?
They're in either Algebra I or Geometry?
We, we refer to it as Algebra I and Quadratics.
Thank you.
With that, or the Geometry?
Okay, so they may not even take the Algebra I, but just go into Geometry, some ninth graders potentially.
In eighth grade with our math, Minnesota math standards, they have Algebra in eighth grade. So, and I believe they are using either the Savis text or a CPM text right now for accomplishing those math standards with the students.
Okay, that was kind of where it was going with my question, like how, which, if they're using CPM or Savis, okay.
At times it's easy to get hung up in the texts, but to be honest, we are guided by the Minnesota State Standards, right? So they are, they're fluid throughout in their planning.
I was just trying to understand the pathway, I was thinking of that graph which I don't have in front of me, thank you. Yeah, and then, sorry, my second question, and it relates to really both of these, like what, what has the feedback been from like the Teaching and Learning Committee? And maybe this is a question here versus here, but has there been feedback and question, what types of questions have they raised?
From, from the reading aspect, we, we, I'm sorry, from the math aspect, we've been bringing our Teaching and Learning Committee through a standards understanding. So that was our big kind of pre-teaching last spring. This fall, next week, or whenever my data is off, no, we're planning this week for our upcoming TNL. And then they'll get a more hands-on with the actual resources and materials and then coming back with some of that feedback.
Okay, so they haven't looked at these resources yet?
All right, thanks guys.
Thank you, both.
Next, please welcome Curriculum Specialist Gwen Molden, who will help lead us through the elementary literacy curriculum process status.
Minutes or less, is that kind of what we're looking at?
Just do your best.
I want to thank you for allowing Katie Hansen and I to come tonight to talk through our elementary literacy team process. Katie is going to have her part coming up next, I'm going to start out. She's a first-grade teacher at Redtail Ridge and is a member of the elementary literacy team as well as field testing two of our resources this fall. So she plays a very valuable part in that process. Along with Katie, we have a quite robust team of thirty-two people who are on that elementary literacy committee. We have members ranging from early childhood staff, and we have members from K-5 at every grade level, as well as special education. We have some English language learner staff, speech and language pathologists, intervention teachers, peer coaches, media specialists. So we have a wide range of experience and expertise on that committee, which has really been helpful. been helpful. The slide that I have up right now is really kind of our timeline from when we started as a committee, and it takes us to present with the yellow, and then the blue is really kind of moving forward. So the yellow, I will go through each one of those a little bit more in-depth, so that you have a more in-depth explanation of each step of the process. So the first part, as we've talked about before, when the Minnesota Department of Education instituted the READ Act, there were two parts that really affected teachers primarily, and that was the training. So in the beginning, when I was here a few years ago, it was, there are three training options for teachers, we went ahead and chose CORE, which was the Online Language and Literacy Academy as our training, and then there was the Curricular Resources kind of part. So it was really important that we started with that CORE training, because the, really the purpose of doing that with all of our staff was so that teachers had an understanding of what the science of reading. And that term has been out there, and really what that means is it's fifty-plus years of research that has been done on how we learn to read. So it's scientific research that really, they just compiled into something more digestible that shows, how as a person, do we really learn to read? Then the structured literacy is the part of how, like, so what the science of reading is, and then how do you do that in a classroom, is the structured literacy. So the training for all of our teachers that they've been doing over the last two years is really centered on that science and those evidence-based practices, so that we can learn, what is all this research saying about how we learn how to read, and then how do we put that into practice in our classrooms? So we were very intentional to really get teachers a base of that understanding before we started meeting as a committee, so that when we started this process, they had that foundational knowledge about what that science of reading is, and what those effective practices look like. So when we first started as a committee in our first meeting, I don't know if you've been to the MDE website, I did link it in here, but they have a whole page on Curricular Resources, and have really grounded their work in the same thing that I just talked about with the training, what the science of reading is, and what resources are out there from publishers that align kind of how they're structured, to that structured literacy and that science of reading. So we spent that first meeting really looking through and trying to figure out all of the information that was put out there from the Minnesota Department of Education. So what they basically did was tiered their resources. So they looked at a vast amount of resources that curriculum companies had, and they put it on tiers. So that first tier was considered highly aligned, to evidence-based structured literacy. So according to their rubrics and their evaluation tools, the curriculum that's linked here and the different companies are the most highly aligned to what we're learning with the science of reading and how students learn how to read. So you can see, there's a few of them linked on there. There are reports, there are rubrics, there are different things, so we really spent time reading all of those and learning more. As you travel down that page, then there's a partially aligned, so it's just like it would sound. These resources are not fully aligned with these practices that we've been learning about through research, but they are partially aligned, and they maybe have some gaps. And again, there's reports and rubrics about all of these different resources, and as you continue to go down, then there's minimally aligned, so further from the alignment, not aligned, and then they had a side category called non-ranked, which I will come back to. So those resources really is where we spent our first meeting, trying to just learn ourselves and become more familiar. At that meeting is when we decided, you know what, let's really focus our time and our learning, and as a committee in the beginning, on the highly aligned, so that we know the resource that we look at is aligned to what we're learning, that research says, for how kids learn to read and what is best for them. So the note sheet that's also attached is basically just one thing we use to try to organize, all these different resources, and so we could kind of see them at a glance. So this, basically, the confusion, I think, is in the different types of resources. So this is basically the same information from that website I was just showing you, organized in a different way. So one of the resources that they've talked about is a comprehensive curricula, so that is that EL Education resource. That basically means that it's a curriculum company that has taken and put their phonics, their phonemic awareness, so those early reading skills, in a product that also has the later skills, like the comprehension, vocabulary, the background knowledge building. So they have a product that's comprehensive, it has everything in it altogether. So you can see, the state designated one of them as highly aligned on that list. Also, they designated four foundational curricula. So foundational means your phonics, your early literacy, so it's your phonemic awareness and phonics or word study component. That can't stand alone in curriculum, because we also need that other side, where it has the comprehension, the background knowledge, and the vocabulary. So if you would choose one of those foundational curricula from the state, you would have to add in the bottom one, which is called knowledge building. So a foundational curricula plus the knowledge building gives you a comprehensive package altogether. So that side category that I talked about, the non-ranked, is basically where our foundations, which is our current foundational skills, K-3 program, was put on a side category. It is aligned to the science of reading, it is aligned to structured literacy, but they found through their evaluation, they felt there was a weakness in the phonemic awareness and the fluency components. So if districts choose foundations or have foundations, they would know they would have to strengthen those two areas of the curricula. So they put it in a side category, because it is aligned with science of reading, but it is weak in a couple of the areas. So after we looked at and studied each of these, we decided we really needed to have presentations from the companies to come in and show us a little bit more. So for each of these on here, we had people come in and present. The nice part about that is you really get to see the print resources for the teachers, for the students, you also get digital access, so you can see their platforms digitally as well. So we spent the next few months having presentations, being able to ask questions, we always had time at the end of those presentations to meet as a committee to talk about what were some positives that we really liked, what are maybe some concerns that we were feeling, and really took a lot of time to learn those different resources. So after that, came our June meeting, we had had all of our different presentations, and we spent that meeting really taking time to go back and look at all the resources, because that had been several months that we had been learning about them. We went back to what we learned in our training with our OLA, and made sure that we were looking at effective instructional principles that we were learning, and we really started tearing apart each of those resources to figure out, what do we think meets our needs the best with our students and where we are? You can see some of the reasons that we came up for eliminating different curricula, and things that really were positive for us with different ones. And we ended up on that meeting deciding, we really would like to look at a little bit further with a field test, because you really don't know the curriculum until you're trying it. It might look good in theory, but until you really put it into action, the ones that are listed in yellow. So I'm gonna go back to this, we looked at that comprehensive curricula with EL Education, and Katie can speak to this more too, and overwhelmingly, our committee did not feel like that was aligned for what we needed. There were a lot of things that we were concerned about with that curriculum, so when that was eliminated, that was the only comprehensive one. So then, we knew we would look at Arts and Letters, which is that knowledge-building curricula, and we just needed to figure out then what foundational curricula we would pair with it. So you can see, back on this slide, we chose two different ones that we wanted to try, the Functional Phonics and the UFLY Foundations, which are both K-2 phonics-based curriculums that are structured very similarly, there are just a few differences. So our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers are field testing the knowledge-building curricula with either UFLY for the phonics, or Functional Phonics for that comprehensive package. Functional Phonics also has a program called Functional Morphology that you see on the second line, which is the only one of the products that had a word study for third, fourth and fifth grade teachers. And our teachers were really impressed with that, and really wanted to try it out. So our third, fourth and fifth grade teachers are also trying Functional Morphology, which is an upper-level word study on really Greek and Latin roots, and how words are made, which also is really helpful, when you come across an unknown word, figuring out what that means when you're reading for comprehension. So they're trying the knowledge building with that Functional Morphology. So we really have four different products that we are field testing right now. And moving forward, we had that communication that was sent out to families, we are going to be presenting to Teaching and Learning Advisory, the resources are out here currently, we're also working to get them out in all the buildings, so that, leading up to conferences and beyond, parents have an opportunity to look at those resources, and we'll be looking for feedback as well from parents. And moving forward, we will continue, just like we did with our math implementation at elementary, we will be collecting feedback from families about halfway through, talking to students, talking to teachers, pulling any data that we can to see if it's showing us anything, and hopefully coming to a decision probably sometime in February would be ideal. So I'm gonna turn it over to Katie, she's the one that's actually using two of these resources right now with her students, and has also been a longtime committee member on the literacy team.
Thank you, Gwen, awesome. As Gwen said, I'm Katie Hansen, and I've had the privilege of teaching in Prior Lake for eighteen years now. I have been on the ELA team for many years as well. Today, I'm here to just kind of share my experience from when I started on the team to kind of where we're at right now, and I am here to share the work we've done to evaluate and improve our ELA for our elementary kids. So over the last six years, I have actually field-tested five different phonics programs, so this has given me the unique opportunity to observe a wide range of components and teaching methods across various curricula. Most recently, our team began the process of reviewing our phonics program that aligned with our new standards, with the MDE. We began last spring by identifying key qualifications that our programs need to meet, we carefully cross-referenced each program and the components and standards needed for our students. After completing the initial research, we invited representatives from each program to come help us understand their materials and help us understand if they meet what our needs as our district. We took detailed notes, and then we compared each program against the essential elements of a high-quality curriculum materials. From there, we narrowed it down to the two most promising programs currently available. I'm currently field-testing the Functional Phonics with other members of our committee, and we also have some of my teammates who are in other schools that are doing the UFLY. Our ultimate goal is to identify kind of the best possible curriculum to support our students and our teachers, you know, through this literacy development. Personally, I have enjoyed the opportunity to field-test these new materials, it has been incredibly valuable to compare these programs side-by-side with kind of what we're currently using, which is foundations. This comparison ensures that we'll be making a well-informed decision that's truly in the best interest of the students. And I just had to share, my favorite part of my day, currently right now, we're on day twelve, is when, after we're done with phonics and our literacy lesson, my kids are doing their independent reading, and they'll shout out, "Mrs. Hansen, I just found a heart word," or, "Mrs. Hansen, I just found a CVC word, come over here and see." And so their excitement, just to kind of share and apply their learning, you know, has been really fun to see. Tomorrow, we're doing our final, our day five at our check-in, we have formative assessments on day five, where we kind of check in and see the progress of how we're doing, and I'm really excited to see, you know, how we've done in the first twelve days of school. Today, one of my students came up to me after phonics and said, "Boy, Mrs. Hansen, we sure do a lot of phonics here in first grade." And that moment truly affected, you know, reflected the impact that we are doing. My hope is that our team's efforts will provide meaningful insights into which program best supports our readers, and ultimately helps them grow into confident, capable learners, so...
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions or comments? Jess?
Hi, thank you for being here, and thank you, Ms. Hansen, what is a CVC word? Acronyms, man.
Vol- consonant word, it's basically your three-letter word with a short vowel in the center.
Thank you. First graders have it rough, man. It's a lot to do. Question, I just want to make sure that I'm following along, so we've got the four different field tests. That's a lot to field-test at one time, or am I wrong on that? That seems like a lot to go through.
It is, the commonality is K-5, that Arts and Letters is that knowledge building, so we have that consistently throughout K-5 teachers. Really, the only difference is the phonics, we have two different phonics. So I will say, though, they are doing Herculean tasks by being willing to do the knowledge building with the foundational skills. It's a lot to field-test, and it's a lot new, so, yes, in that sense, it is a lot. So our K-2 teachers are each trying two, and our 3-5 teachers are also working with two right now.
So if I'm understanding, I apologize, I have to flip through a couple of different pages. Oh, good grief. Okay, so we're doing the Arts and Letters, which is the knowledge building, and that's being paired with the other three, correct? Because the other three are the foundational.
Yep.
So no matter what, it seems like, and this is fine, I'm just trying to understand, so no matter what, I mean, we're looking at Arts and Letters, probably, I think that's a safe assumption, right? It's just a matter of what we're gonna pair with that?
Yes, and I think it's the same as the math conversation, right? We want to see that resource in action to see, are there any things that we're going to have to fill in to make sure that it's filling and meeting the needs of our standards and everything with it, but it is the only one on the list from the state that's that highly-aligned knowledge building.
I think that's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Lisa?
Two questions. So I know our district invested a lot in already in foundations, right? Was there an option to use that and supplement to meet the standards, given the fact that our teachers are trained in it and all that? Was that looked at as far as...
Yeah, and it is an option, we, on this page, when I talked about our different presentations, so in response to the state putting them on that non-ranked kind of side category, they did publish an update to their curriculum, and that's what, we had them come and present that update to us, because we were excited, thinking, okay, it's gonna have everything fixed. And we were less than impressed with their fixes. So they did add some phonemic awareness, we felt it was still weak, and they did add some fluency, but it just seemed as though they rushed in what they did, instead of spending time to really make it quality, would you agree?
Yeah, and I think we had a lot of discussion about that as a team after they presented, and we've seen the other options that were out there, and we were less than happy with the improvements that they made as compared to the rigor with some of the other ones that we're piloting right now.
And you're referring to the foundations curriculum, correct? Like, that team of professionals?
Yes, that came and presented to us.
Okay, okay, thank you. My second question, how does this impact middle school? And are we doing any pilots in middle school?
So we actually had one of the sixth-grade teachers who attended some of our meetings with us, and came to a few of the presentations. So that will again be next phase. They said that they were very excited to see what we choose, some of these, like the Arts and Letters is a K-8 curriculum, that could be possible to extend into middle school. So I think they will start their READ Act training, they say it's coming out in October, and we register in January, but we all know how that goes. So I think once we get going with some training, I think it's important for them to also have kind of that foundational knowledge going in, so that we make a really good choice on a resource for them as well.
Thank you.
Charles? Also, thank you both, right, Ms. Hansen, definitely, thank you. One question, what isn't great about it?
What isn't great about it?
Um, well, I'm only on day twelve, so.
And understanding.
Only on day twelve with twenty-four first graders who are still kind of kindergartners.
Right.
Um, I would say for me right now, it's just, um, we haven't seen the rigor like this before. And so getting their stamina to where it needs to be is kind of the biggest hoop that I'm working on right now with them, is being able to, you know, provide that quality lesson within a reasonable amount of time for them to focus and, you know, take in all the skills. I think that's just kind of, you know, will come as we're, you know, as our first graders continue to improve on their, you know, learning stamina and their skills.
I really appreciate your answer, truthfully. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, I think we'll take five, if everybody doesn't mind, before we move on to the next item. Quick little break, come back at eight fifteen.